We will now take on our item 6A, which was scheduled for 9:20. The public hearing, consideration of major use permit UP 23-03, and PL 25-63 for a 150-foot-tall monopole wireless communication tower within a 50 by 50 lease area containing support equipment for the tower. Location is 6720 Leslie Place in Lucerne. APN is 006-003-01. The applicant is Vertical Bridge VB BTS 2 LLC.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you today?
Good.
Okay. This morning, we have a major use permit for Vertical Bridge for a cellphone tower located at 6720 Leslie Place. The project representative is present in chambers and has prepared a brief presentation following our presentation. If the Board is okay with that.
Yes.
The project proposes a 150-foot-tall monopine communication facility that consists of 12 antennas, one microwave antenna, six remote radio units, one GPS antenna, two ground-mount radio cabinets, a 48-kilowatt backup diesel generator, and a 240-gallon diesel fuel storage tank. The project location is approximately .82 miles east of California State Highway 20, located within the hills of Lucerne, and approximately .44 miles from the community growth boundary of Lucerne. The general plan designation is Rural Lands and Waterways Combining District, and the base zoning for this property is Rural Lands. It is located in the Shoreline Communities Area Plan and in Supervisor District Number 3. The project is located on a flat portion of grassland area on the parcel. There will be approximately 16 trees proposed to be removed, and the applicant has submitted an arborist study and will be donating to the California Oak Woodlands Conservation Program in lieu of tree replacement. The site is developed with a single-family dwelling with a detached garage. The proposed cell tower will be approximately 570 feet east of the existing single-family dwelling. The tower as proposed will be 150 feet in height and is designed to look like a pine tree to blend in with the characteristics of the existing landscape. As you can tell from the tower simulation photos on the PowerPoint presentation, that this is what the proposal will look like. The project was analyzed and reviewed for regulations, reviewed for compliance with the Lake County General Plan, the Shoreline Communities Area Plan, and with the Lake County zoning ordinance. The project was analyzed against Chapter 3 Land Use of the Lake County General Plan and Chapter 5 Public Facilities and Services. And also, the project was analyzed for the Shoreline Community Area's plan with numerous policies and objectives. The applicant has designed the tower to appear to be a pine tree, given the remote location of the site and the tower separation from dwellings and roads or highways. The tower as designed is consistent with the policies stated above. The project proposes widening the existing driveway connecting the tower site to Leslie Place, improving emergency vehicle access during critical situations such as wildfires. The modification necessitates the removal of 16 trees, predominantly oaks of varied sizes and other species. The county is not recommending a tree replacement plan, but is mitigating the removal of the trees by requiring the applicant to make a concession donation to the California Oak Woodlands Conservation to not exceed $19,000. And this was on recommendation by the CDFW. The tower can be used by emergency service providers to disseminate information to the public regarding wildfires or other local, regional, or larger emergencies. The improvements to the driveway stated above will enable emergency service providers to access the property much easier than the present driveway allows. Any locked gates must have a Knox box installed to the specifications of the North Shore Fire Protection District per their comments on the proposed project. These systems are critical infant structure vital for public access to information, facilitating business growth, supporting emergency response capabilities, and enhancing convenience for both residential and commercial users. The initiative will contribute to the upgrade of cellular service coverage for both public and emergency services needed. The project was analyzed against Article 7 Rural Lands, Article 27 Uses Generally Permitted, Article 37 Waterway Combining District, Article 41 Performance Standards, and Article 71 Regulations for the placement of communication towers and antenna. And it is an allowable use with a major use permit per Article 27. Notification of this project was sent to 11 local tribes on August 24th of 2023, and consultation was not requested. The California Environmental Quality Act, a mitigated negative declaration is the proposed SEQA environmental determination for this project. All identified impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation measures implemented. Public comment period occurred from September 11th, 2023, to October 10th of 2023. The mitigated negative declaration was revised with updated information and was recirculated June 9th, 2025, to July 10th, 2025. The reason for the changes in that recirculation is noted on the first two pages of the draft initial study with the memo to the SEQA state. The mitigation measures are outlined in the staff report attachments to the draft conditions of approval and attachment 3, the draft initial study. The SEQA initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts to the resources: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soil, tribal-cultural resources, and wildfire. With the mitigation measures incorporated, the project is anticipated to have less than a significant impact on the environment. Recommendations: The environmental recommendations is adopt mitigated negative declaration, initial study IS 23-007, for use permit PL-25-63, UP 23-03, with findings found in the staff report. And the major use permit recommendations is approve use permit PL-25-63, UP 23-03, with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found in the staff report. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, I had a few questions about that fee that's being donated to mitigate or about, you know, the trees being cut.
Yes, you want to know how we came to that fee?
Yeah, so I mean, I looked at it and how it was, it was like 325 per inch of tree, so that's with a cap of $19,000.
Yes, so some of the trees that are being removed are multi-trunk tree. And with those ones, they have asked, and Mireya and the CDFW has agreed that taking an average, whenever one tree has like three trunks on it, taking the average and doing that, and also capping at $19,000 was because they have decided, or the cellphone company has made the determination, if they can not move over a tree, they're going to do that. They're going to opt to not remove a tree. So that's how they came to that determination.
So I'm assuming they're going for the full 19, as there are a lot of trees that are being removed?
Right, so they're going to try their best not to remove all those trees, but if they do, that's where the cap lays, is $19,000.
Yeah, because I was just kind of doing the math, and it's like about five feet of tree that would get to the $19,000. So anything, you know, that could be two trees or three. So seeing that it was like over, like, was it like over 20 that were planned to be removed?
16.
16 of them?
Yes.
So I assumed automatically that they were just going to do the 19.
Yeah, I'll let the applicant's representative speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that it was required because of the improvements to the road, and there's really no way that you can, you know, you have to make sure that you're able to get to the, that the easement is clear for any maintenance or construction, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Because if not, you'd end up damaging the trees if you didn't remove them.
Correct.
So, yeah, it makes sense. That was just one of my questions for that. If anyone has any further questions?
Yeah, so I was looking at the comment letter from Chris, and it didn't reference an actual cultural resource study that was done. It did recommend, it did say there was no study done. Was there an actual study done for this site?
You mean a cultural and agricultural?
Cultural resource assessment?
Yes, there was a study done for it.
Okay, and then second, prior to ground disturbance, cultural resource plan. I've never seen one, is that something that we can take a look at? So it's, assume it's going to be when the actual work is happening. And so at what point is that cultural resource plan going to be submitted by the applicant to the county?
That is prior to any ground disturbing activities. It just means that everybody on site has had cultural and tribal-cultural resource training to be able to identify anything that could be determined to have significance. And it will be required for them to submit to us prior to any groundbreaking activity, saying that everybody who's going to be on site will be trained.
And those have been submitted previously on other projects?
I'm not, I can't, I can't talk about what other projects have, but I am working with one right now, a cellphone company right now, that is required to submit that to us prior to ground disturbing activities. And it is part of their conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions or comments. So on page 24 of the initial study, I believe that's where it was, it says, "To date, the county has not yet formally adopted its transportation significant thresholds or its transportation impact analysis procedure." My question is perhaps a little bit off topic, but just wondering if there is a plan for the county to make such an adoption? Or will that be considered in the general plan? As currently, it seems like we are relying on the California Office of Planning and Research Transportation Impacts, which may or may not relate to Lake County?
I will let Director Turner, if she is still on, speak to whether or not, what level of analysis is included in the general plan EIR. But you are correct as far as this analysis goes, and what we are currently using are those standards from OPR, the California Office of Planning and Research for Vehicle Miles Traveled.
Commissioner Rosenthal, I would actually prefer to do a little research to get you a much better explanation than I can do off the cuff right now. I know that there was a transition in a number of jurisdictions when level of service was switching over to vehicle miles traveled. And because, I think it was because of our air basin, we didn't need to switch to that, but let me, let me get that, and I'll respond to you via email to all the Commissioners after this meeting. Unless you prefer me to bring it back at a future meeting.
I think the email is fine, and then we can move from there.
Okay, great, will do, thank you.
Unless my fellow Commissioners feel differently. And then I also had a question in regard to the fire zone. On page 1 of the initial study, item 12, it says hazards, SRA very high fire area, yet on page 27, listed under G, it states the project site has been identified as being within a moderate hazard severity zone by CAL FIRE. So I'm just wondering whether this is a very high or a moderate zone?
Let me look that up really quick.
So given the update of our fire maps that are, have just recently happened, I wouldn't be surprised if everything's in very high now. There's a very small percentage of our county that's even left in moderate.
Okay, then I also had a question on the roads in regard to the width and the surface. Just wondering if the width, surface, and design meets the 4290 expectations and will support the 70,000-pound fire apparatus?
So the applicant is proposing to upgrade the road, and that is within the site plans, and it will meet the 4290 regulations on the property.
And then in regard to one of the comments that we received, while the neighboring properties are currently undeveloped, as one of the public commentators brought up, who is within 500 feet of the project, will this project affect future development on the neighboring parcels should they wish to develop?
I actually responded to that comment. That actual property is located, I think, 1,500 feet away from the cellphone location, it's not within the 500 feet or anything like that.
Thank you, that's all I have now.
Are there any more questions before we open public input? All right, so we're going to, oh, okay, we'll do the presentation first.
Samantha, if you want to come up, I will put your PowerPoint presentation on the screen.
Good morning, Commissioners. While Trish is doing that, just thank you, Trish, for your presentation as well. And there might be some repeated information, but I do appreciate the presentation and for the consideration of our project today. My name is Samantha Herman. I'm here on behalf of Vertical Bridge, which is the tower applicant. They are an infrastructure company that builds wireless towers across nationwide, and they do allow for future colocations and for multiple carriers on one tower, which does reduce the overall number of infrastructure and wireless towers within a vicinity. And on Vertical Bridge's behalf, and referring back to the county staff recommended, recommendation of approval to the telecom facility, subject to conditions, Vertical Bridge does also accept the proposed conditions of approval and supports staff's recommendations as well. The first slide is fine, thank you. And the telecom facility does meet county code requirements. It is consistent with the general plan, as Trish demonstrated, and it will fill a significant gap in T-Mobile's in-building coverage within the targeted service area. And the applicant has showed that the project will comply with FCC regulations for radio frequency emissions, and any consideration of the alleged health effects is preempted by federal law and is determined by federal regulations. The tower is designed as a faux pine tree, and the site is surrounded by tall trees and located a significant distance away from frequent and public viewpoints. And as shown by photo simulations, which Trish has shown and are included in this presentation, the tower does blend in with its surroundings, and we do respectfully request approval today. I do also want to mention that 72% of households within the U.S. do rely on wireless communications as their only means of telephone communications, and 240 approximate million calls are made to 911 every year, and 80% or more in many areas are from wireless devices. And the next few slides just show the significant gap in coverage provided by T-Mobile's radio frequency engineers. And so this slide does show the current coverage provided. And up in the northwest is that pink dot that is the existing T-Mobile tower. And this is the only tower within five miles that we were able to identify. And this is, has T-Mobile equipment on it as well. And then this is the coverage provided by the proposed wireless facility. And this green does represent reliable coverage, while the yellow represents lacking coverage and just a less reliable coverage. And this would provide 2,956 additional indoor population residences covered with the addition of the proposed facility. This is just a side-by-side comparison of the two. And then this is just a map of the five-mile radius, and it does show the existing tower that T-Mobile has equipment on. And we were not able to identify other additional towers within this radius. And then the next few slides just show the four views from our photo simulations. This is the closest, this is within the property. And then this one is from Leslie Road, farther south. This is also from Leslie Road, a little directly south of the tower. And this is from Leslie Road as well, and is a little bit farther south. And the applicant, and on Vertical Bridge's behalf, we have demonstrated that T-Mobile does show a significant gap in coverage in this area. And T-Mobile will be the first wireless service provider on the proposed tower. It will be able, available for colocation for future carriers as well. And T-Mobile's RF engineer did provide the technical support to demonstrate the significant gap in service in this area. We were not able to identify potential colocation options either on existing structures or existing towers in the area. There are no feasible alternative locations in a zoning district that would be more preferred under the county's code within the targeted service area. The proposed facility does meet the county zoning requirements for a new facility. No variances or exceptions have been requested. And based on the foregoing, we do respectfully request the planning commission's approval of the application, and we do concur with the sample motions that Trish and staff provided in their staff report. And I am here for any questions, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have any questions from the planning commission?
I just want to thank you for the photo simulations, very helpful. Thank you.
Now we'll open up public comment for this item. If you wish to speak, give us a hand in the Zoom room so we know you're there. If anyone in chambers wishes to speak on this item, I'll take chambers first. So please come to the podium, you'll have three minutes, and say your first and last name.
Good morning, Chair Chavez and Commissioners, Margot Cambara. I just have a quick comment on something I just heard this morning, and if I misheard, my apologies. I offer a clarification on public resource code 4290, fire safety requirements for roads. I thought I heard that the applicant is only going to be making changes on the property. CAL FIRE's Mike Wink recently presented to the commission and clarified that 4290 applies to the roads also leading to the property, not just to that portion of the driveway or the road on the property. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And do we have any hands in the Zoom room? All right, we'll take our first hand.
Hello, am I on?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, this is Eric Snyder. We have a number of lots which are in the vicinity of the proposed tower. I have a couple of questions. Two years ago, we were asked, we were presented a proposal for a monopine pole. Is this a separate project? Are there two poles or just one? I never followed up on whether the other one was constructed.
I got staff telling me that it's just one pole at this location.
It's just one pole, okay. The, following up what the previous speaker asked about the roadways, there are a number of very dilapidated roads going up to this site. And I'm wondering if there's any requirement on the developer to improve those portions of the road. That'd be Dixie Road, Dunston Road, and Farren Road. They're very steep, the grades are steep, it's very rough. And a number of years ago, when we proposed to the county to merge a couple of lots, we were told we would have to improve on the infrastructure. And I'm just wondering if there's any other requirements that would go along with this? And then one, just one last comment. I'm not opposed to the tower, but I'm just not sure when the photos of how it might look from Leslie Road, I'm not sure where on Leslie Road those photos were made. And that would be all my comment.
Thank you for your comment. And we have another hand in the Zoom room?
Good morning, Maria Khan, just have a quick comment. The cell towers are not simply pieces of infrastructure. They are long-term intrusions into living ecosystems and cultural landscapes. Their effects.
I think we, I think we lost you there for a second.
Oops, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Can you hear me now? Okay, so I don't know what you heard, so can I start over with my three minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair and members of the Board. Cell towers are not simply pieces of infrastructure. They are long-term intrusions into living ecosystems and cultural landscapes. Their effects reach far beyond visual impact or signal coverage. They influence the health of people, wildlife, and importantly, the integrity of tribal-cultural resources that tie this land to its earliest stewards. For nearby residents, continuous exposure to radio frequency emissions brings legitimate concern. Federal limits address only heat-based or thermal effects, but an increasing body of peer-reviewed science points to non-thermobiological effects at far lower levels: chronic fatigue, sleep disruption, cognitive and cellular stress. And these are not fringe ideas, they are under active scientific review. The harm to wildlife is even better documented. Tower lights and guy wires cause millions of birds and bat deaths each year, confirmed by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Insects, including pollinators vital to agriculture and native plants, can suffer orientation and reproductive disruption from the electromagnetic fields. Habitat grading, trenching, and new access roads fragment the ecosystems already stressed by drought and fire. But what's often left unspoken are the impacts to tribal-cultural resources. These towers are frequently placed in high-elevation or ridgeline areas, places that hold ceremonial, archaeological, and ancestral importance. Grading evacuation and trenching disturb soils that have never been surveyed under the standard required by SEQA or by AB 52 tribal consultation mandates. When such resources are destroyed, they cannot be replaced or mitigated, and they represent permanent cultural loss. The environmental consequences also extend to soil, water, and riparian systems. Tower pads and trenching can accelerate erosion, disrupt natural drainage, and threaten sensitive waterways like Schindler Creek, which provides habitat for protective species and holds historic significance for local tribes. Each of these issues, health, wildlife, hydrology, and cultural protection, meets the legal threshold of substantial evidence supporting a fair argument that this project will cause significant impacts. Under SEQA, that's enough to require denial of the permit. For the protection of local residents, the preservation of wildlife and watersheds, and the safeguarding of tribal-cultural resources that define this region's identity, we respectfully, or I respectfully urge the Board to deny this project and uphold the fundamental duty to protect the public and environment for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any more hands? All right, no more hands in the Zoom room. Bring it back to the chambers to see if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing no hands in the chambers and no hands in the Zoom room, we'll close public input and bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
I have a question on the 4290 requirements. This committee spent a lot of time over the last many months talking about access for fire issues. So is it, we have a clarification, is the applicant required to make sure that there is full access to the nearest thoroughfare? Or what is the breadth of the requirement for that?
Yeah, 4290 is required for the internal driveways only, not the whole stretch of like the public road, for example, leading up to it. And the applicant is proposing to meet 4290 requirements for this project.
So it's possible that the road getting up to where the applicant's requirements begin, that road may not be compliant with 4290, is that correct? Is that possible? Is that what you're saying?
It is a possibility, just like many of our roads in Lake County, unfortunately, aren't completely up to code with 4290 requirements.
And for a little additional context, Commissioner Rosenthal, we have no nexus or authority to require. to require road improvements outside of the direct control of that permutee. So that is why we limit the road improvements to be, to the project parcels.
Thank you.
Yeah, although this is an ongoing conversation, again, this here seems to be in a very steep area where on the property itself, it's describing portions of the road that are in excess of 16% grade. I guess I would like to, I was not able to go up and take a site visit on this site. I would refer to our District 3 commissioner if he happens to know a little bit more about this area, but, but it does nonetheless bring up a concern as far as if fire apparatus cannot get up that road should there be a fire. What is the steepness of the terrain that precedes getting to this parcel? And will that put anybody else in jeopardy?
So I'll say I'm not familiar with the area, I didn't have a site visit, but that does, the questions are valid, I believe, in terms of fire safety. I don't know how far the road is to the actual site, and what, any response, but I believe Mike Wink did say their interpretation was required from the road to the site, so I don't, I don't know where, like Director Turner was saying, the nexus is to make that a reality. It is of concern, and so I don't, like I say, know where we would go with that, you know, if that's, that's enough to deny this, this application, but it's something we need to consider as a commission.
I would just like to see some more information about this situation. As we have all said, we've spent a lot of time talking about fire in roads and access, and, and to the point that you made, a lot of our roads are not up to 4290 compliance, but when we have the opportunity to look at that, we should make sure that we're making a good decision.
I may offer just a little more information that may be helpful. The tower would also be unmanned, as opposed to, you know, like a commercial facility or something where a bunch of people would be residing and living, and then also one of the main purposes of the tower would be to increase emergency response, support services with allowing, you know, more data coverage or cellular coverage in the area. So those are just a couple other items I wanted to note. I don't know also if the applicant has any more information about that, but we'll defer to them as well. As far as staff's analysis, it is in compliance with all of the requirements that we do have that we're able to apply to the project.
So prior to the construction of, of the tower, obviously, the road improvements are going to happen first, are the driveway improvements, tree removal, and basically making the site accessible to when construction activities may begin. I mean, I would assume that they're going to be bringing in construction equipment up there, and most of it is, you know, it could be heavy equipment to grade the driveway, to move trees, and do whatever they need to do. I believe those are big enough, big equipment enough, I don't know if you can compare it to a fire truck, but I think maybe getting some, some kind of comment from, you know, Chief Wink or anyone that can say, okay, like, you know, we could get up there, or there is a way that they would approve a vehicle getting to the driveway, and then from there it wouldn't be a problem to get to the actual site of the tower. I don't know if that would, you know, answer some questions regarding the accessibility to the site.
Yeah, if it's helpful, I know the project was referred to Chief Wink as well as Jack Smalley, our CBO, our chief building official, and I don't believe that they had any adverse comments, or sorry, it was our former CBO, Bill Collins.
You know, they discussed about the road width, and it had to be like a turnaround at the, at both ends or something like that, but that's still within the project site. I mean, I don't have any concerns about the driveway, but some of the commissioners do have concerns about, you know, access roads to the site, which I understand the county's position on it, but that is something that we've discussed in the past about what can we do, but we can't necessarily force the applicants to do that, to make improvements on roads that are not within the property.
And I don't know if Director Turner or council has anything to add regarding your decisions in connection with, with that information. That's above me.
Well, I could just add, it just doesn't, overall, in this county, whether it's this project or any other project, it just doesn't make any sense at all to have a gap between, as far as ongoing, driving 10 miles up a road, once you get to that 10-mile point, it's fire safe, but between, it could be five miles between, you know, an area and that point, that is not fire safe. And that just doesn't make any sense of keeping people safe and keeping our environment safe, especially since we live in an area of extreme wildfire risk and, yeah, and having so many acres of our county burnt, anyway.
Last thing I'll add is I do know that there's a residence on-site also, so the site is already developed with that residence. I don't know if we stated that already, so just want to make sure you have all that information.
So there are already an average daily number of trips to that location, which would be always remain more than what would be due to the operation of the cell tower. The board has been definitely made aware of this commission's concern regarding the roads, and they are working on improving the roads as they can. It's up to this commission to decide if the concern regarding access is significant enough that you're unable to make one of the required findings for approval of the use permit. However, I would caution this commission in making a decision based on road condition accessing the project but outside of the control of the actual permutee or applicant, in that if you play it out, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that would affect a large number of these projects that are going to come before you in the future too, because we do have a number of roads that definitely could be improved. As far as increasing road conditions or improving road conditions to meet 4290 and 4291, it has been talked about adding that as an action or implementation plan into the Lake County 2050 under the health and safety and circulation elements. However, that will be an ongoing action, not necessarily a, something that can be accomplished in the short term, given the extensive road network and the considerable expense in bringing these roads into better condition. So I would, I would caution the planning commission regarding making that the basis of denial of any projects.
I believe that if there was any concerns, you know, brought up by CAL FIRE or, you know, the previous building official, when they review the project, I don't know what conditions might have changed since. If the road has drastically changed from when this item was first, you know, looked at, I wouldn't think there was much change. So seeing that there wasn't any really, like, big concerns by those two agencies or, or, you know, overseeing bodies for this project, I personally don't really have concerns about the, the access. It is an issue in the county, I mean, we're very rural, and I think, like, it was explained that it's going to be really difficult to approve any more projects if we kind of go off of this, you know, that the roads don't meet, leading up to the project don't meet the requirements. If the construction company that's, the contractor that's going to be building these has an issue getting up there, then I would assume that any other vehicle would have issues getting up there, and I don't know if that's a question that can be asked by, or that can be answered by the applicant, that if, what are their plans on construction, and if there's any setbacks getting equipment up, up those roads? Just to kind of clarify, I guess, kind of what our concerns are from the commission.
Hi, yeah. So we haven't had any contractors or heavy equipment up there yet, but our team has been on-site and didn't encounter any issues accessing the site. Obviously, they weren't in larger vehicles like a fire equipment. I do want to mention that the fire, there, the tower itself doesn't propose a significant fire impact. I know it is a, a high fire severity zone. There will, during construction, it is implemented within the staff reporting conditions that a water truck would be on-site in case a spark were to cause any fire, and so there would be water available on-site during construction to mitigate any potential fire starting up there. And the, the tower itself is constructed of non-flammable materials that would not pose a significant fire hazard, but we can definitely, once construction is started and once we do have larger equipment going up there, we can definitely assess the roads and see if fire would have any issues accessing the site as well. That is definitely something we can communicate with planning, with fire, we will be in consistent communication with fire, and our design will be up to fire codes as well. But so far, as it's been mentioned, there hasn't been any adverse comments from, from CAL FIRE.
I have a question really quick. Can you talk to me about who is going to be developing your cultural resource plan once ground disturbance is happening?
So I don't have the exact contact for the cultural resources plan. We did have a cultural resources survey that I can, if it wasn't provided, I can resend that to Trish, and she would be able to recirculate that as well, but I don't have the contact for reconstruction.
And so you guys did hire the firm that did the assessment, though? Or is that from a previous-
I believe it was Trileaf, yeah. I can go back and look at it.
Okay, no, so my concern is, is this has been my concern for many years, is that assessment, if provided to the commission, becomes public knowledge, and, and if there is sites up there, we don't want that knowledge as a tribal person being out in the community because of the threat of looting. But where that hampers me is I, I can't make a determination on cultural resources impact because I haven't been on the site. We had a public comment on tribal cultural resources impacted, and that could be very well happening with the impact to the trees and to the ground disturbance, but if I can't see it, then I have to rely on staff to make that determination. And so with the cultural resource plan, being able to review that, that gives me some insight on what you guys are looking for. You guys have a certain knowledge or threshold of the potential of impact, and so those are areas that I have concern with because as a previous tribal stock preservation officer, I would have been on-site for, for this, to do the assessment myself. And so without any of that information, it leaves this big gap for myself and for my colleagues who don't even get to look or even ask, ask the questions about tribal cultural resources because it's not information we can look at. And so it becomes this place where, you know, I have to rely on staff to go out there and understand what a tribal cultural resource is from somebody who's not from the tribal community. And so that's difficult. And so this is why I bring up this plan. I've heard, I heard cultural resources plan, but I've yet to see one from any applicant. So I don't know what, what is happening with it, who's doing it. If the tribe didn't comment on this project, are they involved with this plan? I don't know. And so it leaves this big gap of information for me that it doesn't sit well. And so that's not your responsibility to come up with that plan, but it is somebody's responsibility to create that plan, but by that time that plan happens, if we approve this application, there's no chance for me to review it or see it or make comment to it, and that's of concern. So that's where I kind of have some, some bit of reservation with the approval at this moment.
I understand. I do want to mention that it was passed on as part of the process when preparing the cultural resources survey that we do have. It is, there is consultation with local tribes, and they did request a copy of this study. I'm not sure, it is stated in the report, and they didn't have any further concerns or comments about the project, but I do definitely understand the, the concerns.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, we definitely appreciate and understand your concerns, Commissioner Brown. Just wanted, maybe for clarification, there's two sets of mitigation measures, one for the cultural resources section and then also the tribal cultural resources section. The cultural resources measure is where you're seeing that preparation of a cultural resources awareness plan prior to construction. What we do is when, after a project gets approved, if it does, once they submit for building permits, grading permits, those associated entitlements, we go through the conditions of approval and make sure that each of those things that are required are checked off. So that would be one, that they would be submitting to the community development department, and then it would usually be reviewed by the planner that processed the project. So that's one thing I just wanted to clarify. And then, secondly, for tribal cultural resources mitigation measure one, it does require the tribal cultural sensitivity training for all of the construction personnel, and it does have the language in here stating the training must be in according, according to standards of the NAHC, that's the Native American Heritage Commission, or culturally affiliated tribes. Training will address potential for exposing subsurface resources, and it goes on to specify specifically what it needs to cover, and we have worked with county council to develop that language so that it is enforceable and can be deemed appropriate mitigation. It also describes the need for tribal monitors in any necessary environmental and/or safety awareness training. And then lastly, just wanted to note that we did fulfill our AB 52 requirements, and we didn't receive a response back as far as formal consultation, but we did offer that. So sometimes unfortunately, we can't control the outcome of whether a tribe is able or has the resources to respond, but just wanted to offer those couple clarifications regarding mitigation and enforcement and the timing of when those actions would happen.
Yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate that, and, and my frustration is also with the lack of response from the tribes that are in the affiliated area as well. And so that's something I rely on, and then, but without a site visit, it does hamper my ability to see what's there on the ground as well. So that's, those are areas of concern that I've expressed and that I do have. So I think going forward, what will help me is being able to have site visits, and so that's, I know that's, to do every project, that's a lot, but I think definitely when there's going to be a, a big disturbance, that, that should be something, and I don't know what the nexus is to, for me to request a site visit based on that type of ground disturbance, or are we free to visit every project? You know, that's, that's what I need to understand too.
You are absolutely free to visit any project, and we would be happy to coordinate site visits for any planning commissioner who would like that. We really appreciate it. I know that we learn a lot when we're doing site visits, and so I make sure that our planners are doing it for every discretionary permit that we have, and it's awesome to, to have the commissioners also put boots on the ground and see what, what's there. And don't forget, when you do a site visit, record your mileage because that is reimbursable.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chair, I just wanted to mention that we have had a hand raised, and for a while, it was, it was still there during public comment, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
At the time, public comment is closed, so we'll continue with any more questions from the commission before we decide if we want to open public comment again. Thank you. Are there any further comments on this project? Seeing that, I mean, I'm getting a lot of mixed thoughts- Seeing that, uh, I mean, I'm getting a lot of mixed, uh, thoughts on this, um, project. Um, are there any suggestions from the commission to um, move the project down to a different date or to take action today?
Chair Chavez, also if I might just, um, add a little information, uh, federal law prohibits jurisdictions from denying telecommunication tower permits based on the radio frequencies or health-related or, um, uh, reasons such as those. That cannot be a basis for our decision or for your decision.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I apologize for my interruption, but I did have my hand raised during public comment and was not called on. Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll take, uh, we'll open public comment. So guest, uh, please state your first and last name.
Thank you, and I apologize. Angela Emerald, um, in the, in the project report, it says that it's a 50 by 50 foot leased area that's going to be in a chain link fence. Um, I wanted to ask, is that area, is, is there a hundred? Are they required to maintain the 100 foot setback, defensible space setback as outlined in 4291? Or will it only be the 50 by 50 foot print that's going to be, um, that's going to be cleared for defensible space? I think it should be the 100 feet and, and radius, um, as we all have to do on our own private property. And then I would also like to request fire suppression on site. Since it is, since there seems to be a question on if the road is 4290 compliant, it might be prudent to put fire suppression on site at some of these projects as they're getting farther and farther into the wildlands. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, since public comment is open, uh, we're going to take a look in the Zoom room to see if there's any more hands.
Looks like Eric Snyder's hand is still up.
I thought I lowered it, but it must be up. Just following up on the fire issue, there have been a number of fires in that vicinity, really close in. And so I'm, uh, just like the previous speaker, I'm wondering if there's going to be a larger setback, uh, to keep fires from affecting the tower itself if they come out. And that would just be my last comment.
Okay, thank you. Any more hands in the Zoom room? All right, no hands in the Zoom room, uh, in the chambers, if anyone wishes to speak. All right. Since you're the applicant, you can do it outside of public comment, but you can definitely answer any of these questions. Um, but I'll close public comment, um, and bring it back to the commission. So applicant?
I just want to, um, there is a fire extinguisher within the compound. Um, so there is fire, um, suppression methods on site, um, within the, the leased area, just to address that.
Thank you. So, uh, commission, if you guys want to entertain any motions or make any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification, again, following up on Commissioner Brown's, uh, comments that, uh, I did have a note here also, um, that it was sent, notice was sent to 11 different tribes, um, and then Robinson Rancho Rio was the tribe that was identified, um, who would respond to this project. But was there, there no response or was there any communication?
Um, yeah, we sent out the notification to all the tribes. The only tribe that responded was the Upper Lake of Edmonton Tribe, deferring any comments to Robinson Rancho Rio. But Robinson Rancho Rio did not reach out to us and request consultation. We don't have any comments provided from them either. Yes, we did.
And just to add a little bit, we, the, the county does not identify the, the appropriate affiliated tribe. We send the request for review and notifications to all the tribes that have requested the notification.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, we have a whole bunch of them.
We also include all of the tribes, um, when we send out an initial study for review as well as the hearing notice for this public hearing. That's sort of, um, something, um, extra. And, and I use that word in the sense of it's not required by, uh, state laws, but we, we want tribal input. Um, so we go ahead and take those extra steps too, in case they have comments that, um, maybe we didn't get during the other process.
May I ask, is there something specific that would be helpful to answer your questions that we could request uh, of, of this process? So that you, so to answer, so that we could move forward or?
No, the, the only, the only, um, the major concern is, is actually being able to, to see what the cultural resource assessment outlined. And so the cultural resource assessment will identify any scientific, um, stone tools, any type of artifacts, that type of thing. Tribal cultural resources can't be identified in, within that report because usually the archaeologists or the firm doing that work is not the specialist in tribal cultural resources. So that's where the tribe's input is valuable in that process. Um, the, the concern I've had is, um, not being able to see those reports or even a redacted version of those reports to give me an idea of what's on the ground. So, so there are certain things I'm, I'm looking for as a cultural practitioner and as a commissioner that would alert me to the potential of there being a site, uh, unrecorded site or recorded site. And so without being able to get on the ground, I, I can't rely on that in the documentation because there, the, the staff wouldn't be the expert in identifying tribal cultural resources. They're, they're going off the report they receive and developing their, their comments, um, that are supplied to us. So, um, other than being able to see a redacted version, and I've talked to other, um, attorneys who say that can be done, but that's not something our council has adopted at this point to, to provide a redacted report that would keep sensitive site-specific information out of that report for us to review to say, hey, there's these potentials. And so that's where a part of the frustration is, is, you know, I'm kind of in that position. Um, and so I know it doesn't get looked at. So when we're doing this SEQA analysis, we're not being able to respond to a portion of that analysis. We can't review it. And so that's where it leaves that room for me to sit there and go, man, did we miss something? Am I missing something? Um, so it's just a, a process that needs to be figured out and, um, but I, I do, um, rely on any tribal comments submitted to help make that determination because we can't look at, you know, what's submitted or anything like that. But other than that, it's not anything staff is doing. Staff has done great. Um, and even when I wasn't in this seat, getting access to information has changed and, um, so things are supporting the process. It's just the responses, something that'll help me from the tribes themselves.
I appreciate Commissioner Brown's comments. Uh, we do, we do, uh, uh, offer every opportunity we can to solicit and, and welcome and encourage tribal input, but we fully respect their sovereignty to, to not have to. So we're not going to stalk them or hound them. But we do definitely consider the project improved when we are able to confer with the tribal, uh, representatives for their input. According to state law, we, we take that, that prohibition or the confidentiality of cultural reports very seriously and do not report and do not release those. We've made a couple of mistakes, but, uh, never do that on purpose. We hold that confidentiality very high, uh, as far as our priorities go. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Anything that you could do to encourage tribal input, we would welcome that effort.
And, and the last comment I make is the tribe might get involved in the cultural resource plan. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know. It's up to the tribe, so I, I couldn't say at this moment that they're not going to be involved.
Last thing.
If it's, also, if I could add one piece of information, as a side note, we are working on a heritage resource plan, um, with the Tippos. Uh, and that is in draft form. It's just a real beginning draft that, um, that I'm working with county council on, but we do plan to return that to the Tipo meeting, I think in November for their, their review and input.
Only other thing I was going to add, um, I don't know, I don't know if this helps you at all. I know it does not replace, uh, a tribal member going out and doing the pedestrian survey, but, um, the ARC report didn't note any, uh, re, recorded resources within even like the half mile, um, which I actually often don't see that much, um, because we do have so many, uh, resources in this county. And then I can also confirm that they also did not find any like lithic scatter, for example, which we commonly see. So without, um, divulging any confidential information, um, I don't know if that's helpful to you at all, but just wanted to provide the information.
Yeah, no, that, that is, that is helpful. That is helpful to know. And, and those are the indicators I'd be looking for on, on the ground as well on a site visit. So, thank you.
Well, for me on this project, um, you know, while, a, as I said, the, the road is an issue as far as between the access from whatever the, the main road is to, to get to the site. Um, however, in this particular case, I guess I am leaning to, with the safety of having a cell tower and having access, you know, also kind of weighs into the balance of this, uh, the area does need to be able to, uh, be accessible via communications, um, especially in time of crisis. So again, mixed feelings on this, but.
Uh, just a point of clarity, what is the setback? Is it, is it 50 feet or 100 feet?
I, um, had somebody clarify upstairs, um, with our building official, it is 100 feet.
It is 100 feet.
Vegetation.
Thank you.
Summary to entertain a motion if we're at that point. Okay, I move that the planning commission find that potential impacts associated with the project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration IS 23 dash 07 slash PL 25 dash 63 for vertical bridge VB BTS II LLC on property located at 6720 Leslie Place, Lucerne APN 006 003 dash 01, with the findings in the staff report dated October 9, 2025.
A second.
I got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And one absent.
Okay, I move that the planning commission approve major use permit PL dash 25 dash 63 slash UP 23 dash 03 for vertical, vertical bridge VB BTS II LLC on property located at 6720 Leslie Place Lucerne APN 006 dash 003 dash 01, based on the findings and subject to the conditions in the staff report dated October 9, 2025.
A second.
I got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And one absent. Uh, both motions pass. Note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission's decision, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the planning commission's final determination. All right, so, yeah.
Chair Chavez?
Yes.
Um, if it's okay with the planning commission, uh, and staff, I am happy to leave you in our very capable, uh, hands for the next item of the climate adaptation plan. And I'm going to jump off and, and go back on vacation.
Very well. Thank you, Director.
Thank you and enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.
All right, before we take our, uh, non-timed item 7B, I'll request a break, um, of 10 minutes. Uh, we'll be back at 11 AM.